Well, good evening and welcome to the January 8th rare Tuesday night council meeting. Anne, would you please call the roll?
I'm Ms. Saludo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms.
Here.
Mr. Reiner.
Here.
Mr. Rosa.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Mayor Peterson and Mr. Keenan Art.
Mr. Keenan is ill and Mr. Peterson, Mayor Peterson had a prearranged event this evening. So, well, we have a special treat. My friends from Weeblows Den 8 are here with us and they're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you all would stand and come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Wow, it's a big group. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Had the opportunity to meet with their pack and they were just such a wonderful group of young men and women and so happy that they could be with us tonight. So, thanks, Mom and Dads for bringing all of them. And that was a fantastic, fantastic looking group of young people. So, thank you for that. Okay, it's now time that we will take citizen comments. If there's anyone that would like to speak with respect to anything that is not on our agenda this evening, we would invite you to come forward and take your, a few moments to give us your thoughts. Hearing none, we will continue to move forward. We have two items on our consent agenda. We have the approval of the December 3rd meeting minutes and a liquor permit. I would like to take a moment, I don't want to pull it from the consent agenda, but I would like to take a moment and give Jennifer an opportunity to tell us just a piece about this liquor permit as requested. It's because it is a bit unusual, but it'll remain on the consent agenda.
Sure. We pointed out in the memo, you typically have a concrete structure when you review these. And this site does have three existing buildings, but the intent is to build a new convenience store gas station. That has not obtained approval. There have been no applications filed. We followed up with the Department of Liquor Control and they assured us that this is routine, that they often will start the application process if there's not a new building constructed, but they will not issue the permit until the final building is approved and is habitable. So, just wanted to note that. We have no concerns.
Very good. So, is there a motion on Florida to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
In a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Anne, would you please call roll?
I'm Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Saludo.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms.
Yes, thank you. And then we have had a request this evening and the applicant is here for, I believe, a postponement, but it is ordinance number 69-18. If the applicant would like to step forward, Anne, you want to read it into the record?
Our rezoning approximately 8.68 acres southwest of Jerome Road, approximately 1,000 feet south of the intersection with McKittrick Road from our rural district to POD planned unit development district, 18 single-family lots and 2.08 acres of open space and preliminary plat in accordance with the subdivision regulations.
Very good. And you had some comments you wish to make?
Just Dan Lorenz, 9341 Jerome Road, we'd like to postpone discussion for two weeks.
For two weeks, great. Okay, we will get you on the agenda for the upcoming meeting. Thank you very much.
Shall we have a motion?
Can we just pass a motion?
Motion.
I'll move to postpone this for two weeks.
Second.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Saludo.
Yes.
And Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Very good. Our next batch of ordinances are a, of a single entity largely. So, I'd like to make a motion to waive the council rules of order to address ordinances 90-18 through 9518 together. And is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second. Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Saludo.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
These ordinances are 90-18, which is Emmanuel Sanchez Carbalo and Yuko Sanchez at 6169 Kara Road. 9118 is Mary Jo Ryman, 5526 Kara Court. 9218, P. Michael Hauser and Judy Fay Hauser, 5504 Avery Road. 9318 is Lynn M. Gray, trustee of the revocable living trust agreement, 5544 Avery Road. 94 is Karen M. Sharp and Michael R. Sharp, 5555 Avery Road. And 9518 is John D. Cormannick and Sharon L. Cormannick, 5527 Kara Court.
Thank you. Mr. Hammer Smith is here to share thoughts with us. Please take it away.
There won't be many on this, so, good evening, council members. There's nothing new to report since the first reading on these items. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have, and staff does recommend approval of these ordinances.
Very good. You gave us a number last time we were together regarding this, about how many parcels we had the balance to do?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, so we're taking away.
Twenty-one down, twenty-four to go.
Very good. Are there any questions regarding these?
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Saludo.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Amherst Grooms.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have first reading of ordinance 01-19.
Declaring the improvement of certain parcels of real property in the city's bridge street district to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments, and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended and authorizing compensation payments to the Dublin City School District and the Toll's Career and Technical Center. Introduction.
I'll introduce it.
Good. And Angel is here to share all the thoughts with us. So, please take it away, Angel.
Good evening, members of council. Tonight, we are bringing forward legislation to approve a commercial TIF on Block D within Bridge Park. The parcels making up Block D are outlined on the slide in front of you in red. As councils aware, Block D has been reviewed and approved previously by both City Council and Planning and Zoning Commission. The basic plan was approved in September of 2017, followed by the approval of the preliminary plat in October of 2017, both by City Council. In June of 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the final plat, which was then subsequently approved by City Council in July of 2018. The creation of this TIF is under the provisions of Ohio Revised Code, Section 570941, which establishes commercial TIFs. City Council has previously approved in 2015 an incentive district or a residential TIF that works in conjunction with the commercial TIF and are layered upon each other. Block D is planned to be a mixed-use area with a total square footage for each product type listed on your screen. I'd like to point out that as council has previously heard, Block D includes the public market that has been previously discussed. The public improvements are estimated to be valued at $61.2 million, and based on the minimum values established for each of the product types, is expected to generate almost $62 million in TIF revenues throughout the 30-year period. These TIF proceeds will be used to retire the debt on the Block D improvements and the community facilities specifically within the Bridge Park development. The establishment of this TIF is consistent with the other TIFs that have been approved within Bridge Park, namely Blocks B, C, A, and Z, and is essentially required as part of the development agreement with Crawford-Hoyne in order to provide the funding stream needed to finance these community facilities. So, with that, the staff is recommending approval at the second reading on January 22nd.
Very good. Thank you. Comments, questions? Please, Kathy?
I had a couple of questions. The language in, in the document that, in the ordinance, it says that the funding will be for public road improvements, parking garage, and conference events facilities.
Facility.
Facility, excuse me. There, it just singular. That is not planned for this block. Why is that language?
That is not because all of the community facilities that are part of the Bridge Park New Community Authority are always outlined in these specific TIFs to be funded by the TIF service payments. So, these service payments can only be used for those community facilities, which does include the Conference and Events Center.
Would it then not be appropriate to add the market in here? It was, I'm not quite sure why that language wasn't in there.
Certainly, this could be amended for the second reading to include the market. That would be appropriate.
But you're saying this, this, the conference event facility is in there as a quote-unquote placeholder for, because it could potentially happen? I'm just curious why that's, that rather than the market is in there.
All of the TIFs are established with generally the same public improvements listed because fundamentally, all of the community facilities that are, that are part of the Bridge Park NCA are ultimately funded by these TIF proceeds. So, for, I guess, broadness and so we have flexibility, this would allow those TIF proceeds if they would need to be needed in other areas. However, as each block has been financed, we've tried to segment all the financing from that block, having the resources available from just that block to fund the debt service on that block. And when I say us, we're not the ones issuing the debt for it. It's Crawford-Hoyne. But we've tried to have each block be standalone. But just for flexibility, that language is included in all of the Bridge Park TIFs.
But you're suggesting it, it would, it'd seem appropriate to add the market?
Certainly.
In there?
It was my understanding that the market would not be funded with TIF revenue, that that would be New Community Authority tax money that would fund the market. I, I was not under the understanding that that, that would be funded through TIF revenue.
It's a combination. It is private equity, it's New Community Authority service charges, and then the TIF revenues.
Yeah, it's in there. Okay. I, I'm sorry. So, Angel, I, I also had a couple of questions on, you, you prepared a follow-up memo, thank you, on the actual funding agreement. I see that it is mentioned in, in this. Should we discuss that now or, when do you want to discuss that? I had a few questions about that. What would be your, whatever?
Your preferences.
Because we're not passing this tonight. We could do that later. We could do that now.
I would do it now.
You want to do it now? Okay, thank you. And I sent an email, which I know you responded to, and I'm not pulling that particular, I'm going to pull that document back up here so I can look at it when we're... In, so this was in memo and other information. Can you share a little bit how the targeted special principal redemption amounts were identified?
Sure. And these are still pending. These are just, as Crawford-Hoyne is work with, working with their lenders, they're establishing these targets. So, these will be a function of whatever negotiation takes place between the developer and then, and their external financing partners that provide for targets that can be redeemed. So, in the event that the service payments are not in excess and can't be redeemed, the word target is apparently intentional in this, from what I've come to learn, because Crawford-Hoyne wouldn't want to be in default if they didn't meet this. So, it's simply a target. So, these will get finalized as those terms are coming into finality with their lenders.
So, they foot to about 15.8 million. So, it could go up to 20 million? I mean, this could, this is all dependent on the financing that they finally determine?
Yes. And I can try to, I can follow up with them to see, I wouldn't expect a lot of variation. I mean, they're getting close to the end of their negotiations with their lenders. I think they're hoping to close this loan by March 1st. So, we're at the tail end of their financing structure. So, this was the last version that got circulated between the two parties, that their, their financial advisors provided response to our, our response. So, I can't imagine that they would deviate much from this, but I will certainly follow up. And then, at the second reading, if there are any deviations, let you know. We should know more as time gets closer.
So, we're...
I would also add, if I could, just from the tail end of that, that as we left off this, with this issue and council in the direction that you gave us to work with them, at the time that they walked out, they were shaking, yes, we think we can do that, based on, you know, the, the direction that council gave and how you wanted to see that. But there was no guarantee. They needed to take that back and negotiate that through. So, that process has been going on all this time, like with the turbo bonds and those sort of things that they had to sort out.
And that sort of leads me to the second question, because I went back and, and read what I think our discussion was about the city's placement in the waterfall. And, and again, as I recall, we had agreed collectively that we wanted to retain a position in that waterfall, not be removed from the waterfall, and that we would share, that was the terminology that we agreed, that we would share those revenues along the way. As I read the current language...
There was a share of the upside of the revenue along the way.
Yes, thank you very much. Share of the upside, yeah, exactly. But, as I read this, I'm struggling with how that actually played out. And the language is complicated. It, it is complicated. So, you know, I would like, request before we agree this, could you give us some examples of how that plays out? Because I, I look at the way the waterfall is now, if, if there's money owed, say, to the city on minimum service payments for other blocks, it is now after this minimum payment, right? These minimum payments and any catch-up occur before that debt is paid off or before those service payments are caught up. So, in that waterfall, you know, item seven, it, in, if we're sharing it, it seems to me should, should come before this line in, in some of those discussions. So, I'm, I would love some more background on how this particular arrangement fits the, the sharing on the upside model here, because I'm, I'm struggling to see it. And I know it's, the, the language are complicated and, and we didn't have, as you said, because they hadn't gone out and done it, we, we didn't have these numbers. But I'm struggling to see how that sharing happens in the way that waterfall occurs.
Okay. I, I will provide a follow-up memo that has more concise numbers and examples of how upside, if upside is generated, how we are capturing that. So, you'll have that for your next meeting.
Yeah, because the, the way it reads to me now, we, we would participate, but far than not, it, it isn't a sharing of those upsides. It's after all these payments and, and any, any payment that hadn't made in a previous year is repaid. So, I'm, I'm struggling with how that sharing part. So, if you could, if you could illustrate that, because I do believe that's what we agreed to collectively.
I think what Kathy's trying, referring to is we, I think our intention was is we would be a pool of people that would receive the revenue.
That was my understanding of it, yeah.
Versus a, a linear of take, getting out of our place in line and, and finding another place in line. But that those groups of people would come together for the greater good and say, we will all benefit from this. So, we will all, you know, together be in this space for repayment.
Well, I think that's, I think that's correct, but I, I do think we were giving up a little bit. So, I think what we need to do is make sure we highlight what we gave up under the, under that, if you will, give up. We did reposition. How did we reposition? And then, we'll do our best to try to give you some sort of walkthrough scenario on how that might work.
Maybe a summary on the repositioning, but then also on the revenue sharing.
What would be helpful with that?
Yeah.
Is if you could spend some time thinking about the types of numbers that you have an interest in, so that we can frame that walkthrough with that. Because otherwise, I'm just picking out numbers that might not. I, I could do that. But if you have some thoughts in mind about those kind of numbers, let us know that so that we can frame our scenario around that.
You mean target, target numbers?
Yeah, or, I know you're interested in scenarios.
And, you know, Dana, we did, we did agree that a turbo made sense and that we were, you know, all of that we agreed to. But we also agreed, as I recalled, and I went back and read it, is that we were going to stay in line and if there were excesses, we would share in those. And I'm not seeing that in the language. I'm not saying, I just don't see it in there. And the, and the way it works now, the service payments actually move down, any outstanding service payments move down on that waterfall. So, again, because of these targeted revenue numbers, I'm not sure I'm understanding how that works. So...
Well, we may communicate if it's okay with the rest of council, a little bit back and forth with Councilmember DeRosa as we formulate some of the what-ifs. Because I don't want to create some what-ifs.
And I don't know that the target numbers are as important as the, as the theory.
I'm not suggesting the target numbers.
But if that's an easy way to do it.
The what-if number is relative to the target?
Yeah, fine.
So, yeah.
Fine. So, they just help us, because I'm, I'm, the language is complex, as we all know, and it, it's not clear to me how that sharing is happening.
Sure. And I, I guess I would just quickly point out, step five in the waterfall, the new step five, is where the turbo bond structure is in. So, one of the things that we did, as opposed to just have it be open-ended, there are, what you see in the first schedule, the targeted special principal redemption amounts are the amounts that can be redeemed above and beyond what the normal debt schedule would call for. Then, step six would be of the service payments and NCA revenue, after those other things, the turbo bond structure, the regular principal and interest, and any compensation that's due to us to pay the schools or the county compensation in the last 15 years of the TIF, once the abatement rolls off. That's what's coming to us in its entirety, whereas before, there was a split there. So, really, the amounts that you see in the targeted revenue amount will ultimately tie to what the debt service is, what those projected county compensation amounts will be, the school district amounts, and the turbo bond retirement, with the rest coming to us.
And I guess that's my question about the turbo bond requirement, because the way it's written is, if there isn't, if there isn't enough in a current year, the subsequent year has to, to take the current year plus the past year. So, there's, I can't see how we'll ever get to the sharing point, given, given the way that turbo is written. And to me, I don't understand why number seven, to the city and amount equal to the shortfall of any of the minimum servants' payments on Block B and C, why that wouldn't be higher up in that, that waterfall. Because it would be considered a, a guaranteed debt payment, right? I mean, we've agreed to that, but it's, we're going to make these turbo payments before we're, before we would see dollars there.
Yes. And that, that was the premise for the discussion when the market was discussed, is that these TIF dollars would, to some extent, be utilized to retire that debt service faster.
The TIF dollars.
Right. Or, I, I shouldn't say just TIF dollars. Any of the revenues that are coming in, whether it be the NCA charge, the TIF revenues. But I, I understand your questions. I will make sure that there's a follow-up and get them answered.
Thank you, Angel, because it is, the language is complicated. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And it's also difficult when the numbers aren't finalized yet. So, I can appreciate how the original agreement had nothing, and now you're seeing numbers for the first time. So, I understand your concerns.
I have a question for you, Angel. Number nine, or number eight, is the NCA revenues to restore the maximum O&M reserve for the public market. So, it seems like the public market is way, way down the list. This is on top of NCA revenues or revenues that would pay for the market. I mean, explain that a little bit about the market's ability to be funded. Where is it? Because it's coming off the revenues of Block D in order to fund the market, but it's at the very bottom of the list, which is a little surprising to me. So...
That is just an operation and maintenance reserve fund. It is not the debt service for the market. So, the debt service for the market, along with the parking garage that's within Block D, along with the streets that we discussed as part of the market discussion, would be accounted for in the waterfall, number four, the amount necessary for payment of principal and interest due on the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority and NCA debt. So, the, the debt for that is covered there.
Right. But I'm, I'm, I guess my question is, at the very end, operation and maintenance seems to be like there would be a pretty empty bucket by the time you get down there. So, operation and maintenance of the market is going to be handled in what way? Because there's never going to be any money left for it at that place.
The term operation and maintenance, it's not for the operations and maintenance of the market. It's a reserve fund for future years when a repair needs done. But I can provide further clarification on that, on how that reserve fund, kind of like a debt service reserve, you wanted to start banking money.
Okay.
But there are provisions in the overarching agreement that establish what the operating and maintenance reserve funds need to be for all of the community facilities. So, if there aren't revenues here, there's a requirement for those buckets to get, get filled from other sources that would not be ours and not be from these revenues.
Okay.
I think there would have been a temptation to, to avoid that kind of a reserve, and typically, I think that's the case. And I think one thing we've done pretty effective, we did pretty effectively in the original agreement, is make sure we have these kind of funds, even though they may be at, you know, whatever's at the end runs the risk of not getting filled.
Right.
But to have that, so that over the years, that can build, as, as Angel points out, I think is something you don't see a lot of in some of these. So...
And then, it says here on the screen that this TIF covers all commercial property. And, but that includes residential being commercial, considered commercial. So, all revenues coming off Block D, whether it's residential, or retail, or office, or whatever, is all covered by the TIF.
The residential TIF has already been established, and that was back in 2015. So, this is just on the commercial properties.
Okay.
So, essentially, once this is in place, you'll have both in there together. And we did that so that, you know, at the time, we had an estimate of whether it was going to be apartments or condos. But we wanted to make sure that there was flexibility that if at any point in time those apartments converted to condos, or the product type changed, that we could layer those on top of each other and we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't lose our TIF status. You've got kind of a backup that, that affords you that flexibility. So, the residential is already into place. This puts in the commercial. And just as a reminder, from a county auditor standpoint, apartments are considered commercial.
Okay.
You know, that's a really good point, really. Because we are hoping that there was conversion on those apartments into condos in time. And they end up being owner-occupied. We had quite a discussion on this years ago to make sure that this all turned out this way. So, we would have that option, because what you said is the exception and, and it screws up the deal. So, thanks for pointing that out.
To, to your point, John, one of the, in, in the summary here, it discusses, it's acceptable that the geography of these two TIF overlap, which will allow flexibility in the future for any of the owner-occupied residential units to be converted to apartments. So, there, I, my, one of my questions was, it seems to be a reversal inclusion in this, going from a condominium to an apartment status.
You could have it work both ways.
It's not unusual over the course of time with, with these type of facilities swing back and forth between, we've had that experience with other multifamily here in, in Dublin already.
Yeah. I guess we would just hope that's not the case.
I hope it's not the case. I agree.
Other questions, comments?
I, I have one additional then. Their proposed TIF is within the defined area covered. It, it talks about what would be funded, but I see that the park is noticeably absent from what would, what could be funded from this TIF. Is there a reason why that, that the park itself isn't listed at all?
The reason why is because with the exception of Blocks B and C, all of this TIF revenue will get turned over to fund the community facilities. So, it's my understanding from our legal representation that, for example, once we get to step six in the waterfall, if it comes into our, our hands, then we could utilize it for, you know, depending on how the, what the restrictions are, and certainly the public improvements that the city has in terms of the park, the pedestrian bridge, the realignment of the roadway, the roundabout, those could be utilized.
I'm just wondering if they should be mentioned because, excuse me, in the summary on page one, it says, "The service payments generated within Bridge Park TIFs will be used to fund the public roadway improvements, parking garages, and a conference event facility." It, it doesn't mention the other community facilities.
Okay.
So, like the park. So, I, I think we want to make sure.
I think we, I think we'll have to go back and look at communities and facilities relative to the original EDA, because that, that was, that was all focused on the community facilities that were not inclusive of the park under the EDA, as I believe. Let, let us go back and check it relative to the EDA, because really, the, the original EDA is what is driving a lot of these requirements in this language. So, it may not be something that you can adjust under the agreement you already have. I, I hope I'm not misspeaking on that, but I remember it's built.
But to Angel's point, under number six, as it reads now, that the funds could be used for, quote-unquote, "any legal purpose."
We just need to make sure that should the city be in receipt of any excess TIF funds, that we can then use those for public improvements. But certainly, to Dana's point, would, these are all really centered around, other than Blocks B and C, the community facilities that are part of the development. But we will make sure that, that all of those...
I would think we would either want to name none of them or make sure that we name all of them.
Right. We want to have as much flexibility as possible.
Yeah. One of, and, and we kind of, I feel like we have a partial list. And maybe that's not exactly where we want to be. I'm, I, but I'm not for certain.
Yeah. Let us check the EDA, because I think it's... Yeah, let us check the EDA, because I think it ties to that definition.
I think specifically, there's a definition for what all the community facilities are, because I think I saw that in the original document. And I think for me, it would be not funding something that we may not be aware of. In other words, that the community facility is well-defined, the community facilities are well-defined as they are now, so that we don't end up funding something that we don't anticipate that we're funding, so that the things that we do anticipate-
Well, originally, in the community facilities, the market would not have been one of them.
It would not have been, it was requested to be added.
We just need to find a safe harbor and make sure that we speak to that.
Yep.
Absolutely, and we would list, if that's deemed what we should do. We will list some specific items, but we will also make sure that language is generic enough that says, or any other transportation projects in the Bridge Street District, so that we have this catch-all phrase that allows us the maximum flexibility.
Okay, my final question has to do with, it's section four of this ordinance. Towards the end of it, it says, it says, "reference sections 319, 302, so on and so forth, of the Ohio Revised Code, as the same may be amended from time to time, or any successor provisions thereto, as the same may be amended from time to time, will be allocated, distribution accordance with section six of this ordinance." What would trigger an amendment, these time-to-time amendments, what, how do we know when it's time?
Need one second to reread that sentence.
It's under section four of-
Right.
-service payments and property tax rollback payments.
We'll have to get back to you on that.
Yeah, we'll get back to you on that. I mean, the county-
We have another reading, so.
... what their rollback and homestead rules are, and so, this would not be something that we would amend. It would be something that the county would possibly, if they, if they reduce the rollback that is put in place, it might impact the, ultimately, the revenues that we receive. So, but I'll follow up with that.
That's really my question.
Or change the ORC by the state, which could be out of our control.
Just a general idea of what, the kinds of things that can trigger the amendments to take place, so.
Okay.
Other comments, anything else? Okay, I'd like to take-
I just had one, I'm sorry, one quick question. When you're collecting data, do we know what the bond issue will be, the total amount of that bond that they're seeking?
For block D?
Yeah. And we don't need it now, but if, could you share that? I would just, I couldn't find that number, and I couldn't recall it.
I didn't see it either. Thank you.
In October was expected to be about $32.8 million. So, if there's a more updated number, I will provide that to you in the memo, but I'll include that in the memo nonetheless.
Good. Other comments from council? I want to take a moment to invite anyone from the public that would like to speak with respect to this ordinance to come forward and do so. Hearing none. Very good, we will look forward to a second hearing, a second reading at public hearing at our January 22 meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angel. Resolutions, resolution 01-19.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Delaware County Prosecutor in the Delaware Municipal Court.
I'll reduce it. Thank you. And Dana, you have, you were listed as the-
Yeah, so, this is a standard contract that we have with Delaware County. Minimum cost for this contract is $300 a year, whether we use it or not, so we will pay that. Other than that, there's an hourly rate based on their actual use. So, staff recommends approval of this.
Very good. Comments? A public comment regarding this ordinance, hearing none?
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 02-19.
Adopting a statement of services for proposed annexation of 4.816 acres, more or less, from Jerome Township, Union County to the City of Dublin.
I'll reduce it. Very good, Jennifer.
Good evening, council members. Washington Township filed the aforementioned annexation petition on November 19 of this year. The Union County Commissioners have scheduled the annexation hearing for February 5 at 9:15 a.m. For a regular annexation, city council has to pass a statement of services resolution no later than 20 days before that hearing. We've provided a memo and a resolution outlining all of the services the city plans to provide to the property upon annexation. The property is within Dublin's exclusive annexation area pursuant to the community plan, and is located in the exclusive Dublin Service Agreement, as that's defined in the agreements with City of Columbus. And I think we have a depiction of the property, which is located at, on the screen, at the corner of McKittrick and Jerome Roads. Staff recommends approval of resolution 02-19. Additionally, in conjunction with filing the annexation petition, Washington Township has requested that the city waive our annexation fee of $4,150. Since Washington Township is the primary provider of fire services in the City of Dublin, and intends to use the property to enhance those services, staff recommends approval of the annexation fee waiver as well. Washington Township Administrator Eric Richter is here, and I'm available to answer questions as well.
Very good, thank you. Questions, comments?
No.
I had a general question. So, in this annexation, Jennifer, this will come over being zoned rural? Or how does it-
It will be automatically zoned rural, and so, if, when they intend to develop, which I don't think there's an immediate intention to develop the property, but when they come through for the approvals, that will have to be rezoned.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a designation for R rural, as far as the ensign?
Yes.
There is?
It's, I, I-
Does anybody know that?
I think it's one, one unit per acre.
Okay, thank you.
R1. And I don't think it's in your, in your five-year CIP to construct this facility just yet, but always visionary, looking for the future, our friends at Washington Township making sure that they have made adequate preparations, so. Any other comments from council? No? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak with respect to resolution 02-19? Hearing none?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
And Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
We will need to make a motion to waive the annexation petition processing fee of $4,150. Is there a second?
Sumoed.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Next is resolution 03-19, appointing a member to an unexpired term of the Architectural Review Board.
Introduction.
I'll reduce it.
And you're just gonna report on that, on behalf of the committee? You don't have it, sorry.
I don't have paperwork. Thank you. This evening, we held interviews for our Architectural Review Board, and we have come to consensus on the appointment of this position, whereas a vacancy exists on the Architectural Review Board due to the resignation of Jeffrey Leonard, whereas council has completed the interview process for candidates for appointment in the Architectural Review Board. We will concur from our members of council that Kathleen Bryan will be appointed to the unexpired term of Jeffrey Leonard to the Architectural Review Board. Such term will expire on March 31, 2020. So, but we always are so fortunate to have wonderful applicants come before, and this certainly was no exception, that we had tremendous applicants that were willing to come forward and serve their community and volunteer their time. So, we will hope, we will encourage the balance of those candidates to seek seats in the future as well. So, that is an introduction, so we need to vote on the resolution.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
And Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Okay, staff comments?
Good evening, members of council, only a couple of comments, and actually, a request. In your packet for information only, there was a memo from Director Pepsidero regarding the need for two council members to serve on a stakeholder committee for the review of the Bridge Street District Code Amendment and Design Guidelines. So, we'd like, as if you don't have enough to do, we'd like to have a couple members of council serve on that. There's also a list of folks that they were advancing to serve on that as well. I think those names you were pretty familiar with already, or they had come up under a workshop, or another discussion that we had had on those. So, but anyway, if you're willing to do that, the names would be helpful.
Well, this was my introduction at our retreat last year, so I would be thrilled to have the opportunity to serve in this capacity, and hopefully, one of you would be willing to join me.
I'd like to, I'd like to volunteer for that.
Is that acceptable to the balance?
I have a comment about, about the suggestions on the stakeholders. I would like to see, I would like to see a little enlargement of that. I feel like it's a little bit heavy with the Bridge Street representation, and I, let's see if I can get you, get to that, please. It would be, I think, an idea to include an ARB member, because they are the ones who deal with this all the time. I know there's not a historic society member, but I think an ARB member. I also think a historic district representative, there's a Waterford, but not a historic district representative. Waterford is not historic district, so it seems just like there might be a couple of additional representatives that would, that would create a more balanced stakeholder group. So, as we go forward, I can forward some thoughts on that. Dana, if you'd like.
I guess the guidance, that's great. I guess the guidance I'd need from councils, number one, are the balance and agreement with that, and number two, is okay if Councilmember Fox provides those names, or do you want those to come back to the greater group, or do you want them vetted among fellow council members?
I think it probably would be most fair for those names to come back. Maybe perhaps all of us would have the opportunity to submit names if we would so choose, and we would bring those back and, but this process is gonna happen pretty quick. The first meeting date is set, when is that first meeting date?
You asked me.
It was on there.
I think it's February, like, it's coming up pretty quickly. Yeah.
February 5th.
So, we have one meeting prior to that, that we could, would that give us adequate time?
I think we would need the names, we would need to talk to them.
Right, and I wasn't necessarily speaking about individual names, but more in individual representative, you know, groups of-
Groups would be represented.
Exactly. And so, I'm willing to, more than happy to throw in some names, but I really wasn't thinking in that space.
So, you'd like to see a representative from a resident of the historic district?
Right, definitely, I think the ARB. It is such, is the group that is really looking at process and guidelines, and these are the groups that work with them all the time. I saw planning and zoning was on there, but ARB wasn't, and ARB should be on it since they deal with this constantly, so they should have a representative on there. There was no one from the historic district. I saw someone Graystone Muse, which is great, and Waterford, but the historic district resident was missing.
I don't see anyone from the planning and zoning.
Right, at this point, there isn't, but they requested one.
Can Claudia comment on this to make sure that we're all talking about the same focus here of this committee?
Good evening. I just wanted to mention that this particular stakeholder group is for the Bridge Street District New Code and New Guidelines, which would not encompass the Architectural Review District, which is why that stakeholder group is part of the updated Bridge Street Code and those guidelines, no, I'm sorry, the ARB Code and those guidelines. So, we have two separate code updates and guidelines simultaneously processing through, through the system, and that's the reason why.
Then why Waterford? Why would Waterford be included?
Because they're in the district.
Residents that we have been dealing with in other instances with development proposals in the city.
They would be in the Bridge Street District outside of the ARB review.
Right, but there's, but there's, but the ARB is in the district at the present time, right?
They are, but you, council has asked us to take them out, and that's what we're working on. So, this particular code update takes the district out.
Right, but, and leaves parts of Waterford in?
In that Monterey area, yes.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Well, the Monterey area being specifically by the cemetery, how, yes.
Correct, it's a portion of it, yes.
Claudia, is there a planning and zoning representative? I didn't see a name.
We do not have a name yet, and-
But there will be someone.
There will be somebody, yes.
Okay, great.
Is Indian Run neighborhood at all in the, in this district?
It's not.
No, it's not, okay. All right.
Actually, in light of what Claudia said, that this is a good list.
Yes, I didn't appreciate the fact that there was still part of Monterey Drive that was in the district that's not in the rezoning, and that-
Where it meets 161, where it meets Bridge Street. That it, you know, falls back.
And I apologize, I did not interject. I keep getting the historic district guideline process in this one.
Right, right, no, I know, but in the new rezoning, I thought it went farther than Monterey. Yeah.
Deeper into Monterey, you mean?
No, it encompassed any area that the Bridge Street District encompassed Monterey, as well as the West Bridge Street frontage, as far west as we determined. I don't remember leaving a piece of it open on Monterey that was Bridge Street District and would not be transitioned.
Well, transitioned district is just a district within the Bridge Street District, so.
Right, with its own protections, and those protections.
I think this is probably a good list. We'll need a planning and zoning commission voice.
We'll talk about that, okay. I'll clarify that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The other thing I would suggest, too, is you go down this process, nothing says you can't add people to it if, as you, as you go along, and you feel you need more insight and-
We feel there's a voice that's absent.
And invite people in, or we'll be advertising the meetings and so forth, so.
So, I, if it would be okay with the balance of council, I would like to serve on this. Is there anyone else that would like to participate in this process? Jane, you'd like to? Is that agreeable?
Yeah.
Looks like we need to vote on that.
Wouldn't hurt.
A motion would be helpful, yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that myself and Jane Fox serve on the Bridge Street District Code Amendment Design Guideline. Second.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
The only other item I had, although it's an important one, is that we had announced that Lieutenant Steve Farmer was gonna departing the city to become the police chief for the City of Upper Arlington. We'll be celebrating Steve's service with the city this Friday at the Police Department Justice Center at 3:30. Certainly, you're invited, the public's invited to do that. We were gonna parade Steve out here tonight, but he couldn't make it. But just, I just wanted to say to council and in front of the public, and on behalf of staff, what a great leader we have in Steve Farmer. Hate to see him leave, but this is one of those where we're proud to see him leave, to take all that he's garnered here at the City of Dublin and his leadership abilities, and take that to a fellow community, who also, by the way, happens to be one of our customers through the NREC that we dispatched for. So, that's a, that's a huge win for us. It's a win for us that one of our own would take on such a significant leadership role within the region. So, I just wanted to publicly thank Lieutenant Farmer in this setting, congratulate him, wish him and his family all the best, and thank him for his service. So, I hope that folks can come out Friday afternoon and do the same. Thank you.
It's always a great affirmation of the wonderful people that you have in other communities. When they go to seek the best, they come and find one here, so certainly do want to congratulate him in that role. That's fantastic. Okay, council committee reports. Jane, planning and zoning?
Planning and zoning. We, we had a fairly short session the other day, but we are talking about the historic and cultural assessment recommendations to council, and they'll be coming forward with some priorities, one of them being, one of the many, let me just pull it up. Hold on just a second, I'm still getting used to the board pack, I'm sorry about that. Well, I won't be able to find it. We're talking about educating the public more about the historic district, talking about incorporating the Indian Run neighborhood into a historic category, protecting the stone walls, looking at the restoration of the Indian Run Cemetery as a possibility, looking at financing incentives to help maintain and restore some of the historic properties. at financing incentives to help maintain and restore some of the historic properties. I know I've forgotten one or two others, but anyway, that'll be coming forward to the, to the council, and those are recommendations that primarily came from the ARB, and the planning and zoning felt that they didn't want to change that too much because they felt that they worked with that all the time. So, I think we're going to start to see some, some good energy coming out of the, the work of that historical study. So, that's pretty much it for planning and zoning, thanks. And we're still continuing on, and that's one other thing I wanted to say, we're working very hard on putting together a group, Claudia's helping with that, and Jenny as well, on formalized training syllabus programming for commissioners to be trained ongoing, and a dedicated training that will go through year after year, so that we have highly qualified, highly informed, and highly educated commissioner members.
That's been a project long overdue, so, great, thank you. Let's see, we have admin committee, that would be myself. We held our ARB interviews, obviously, this evening, and came with some great candidates and, and made a selection there. We have our interviews for the planning and zoning commission candidates to be scheduled. We're still working on finalizing that list and that date. You all received an email from Michelle Crandall with a questionnaire, the, a skeleton of a questionnaire for which us, for us to put meat on those bones, for questions that we feel like need to be answered in our retreat time together, and also some topics largely relative to policy and some, a few other things. So, if you could take a few minutes and read through those, that email, and respond with the things that you feel might be absent, that you would like to see present, indicate that, so that we can make sure we hit everyone's priorities in our retreat. Our retreat dates, again, will be the twenty-first and twenty-second. More information about that I will hopefully have out here in the, in the coming weeks. And also to remind, we have a performance review for our city manager and our clerk on the twenty-seventh of February. I'm beginning to gather the materials for that, so that we can have a successful time together for those. Up next, Community Development Committee, Mr. Reiner?
We have a meeting scheduled for February the fourth at six p.m. to review the Bridge Street District Code Amendment Phase One, and I hope to see you all there. And those of you who aren't on the committee who are interested are welcome, too.
Good. I think we're looking for dates for the Beautify Your Neighborhood Grant and a few other things to be reviewed as well, so. We will get those on the calendar. Finance Committee, Mr. Keenan is unavailable to be with us this evening. Kathy, Christina, do you have anything you would like to say in lieu of...
No, just that the hotel motel tax policy discussion will be part of the overall policy discussion with council retreat, and then if we have to have additional discussions as a, as a committee, we will do that moving forward.
Very good. Public Services Committee, Christina?
So, we had the Dublin Arts Council Public Art Plan, which we reviewed on December fifth, and it was a really wonderful and rich discussion. I really appreciate a lot of the input that Jane gave, as, as well as John. I think we had a, a great discussion about, they had hired a world-renowned artist to do this public art plan, put it together, try to figure out the direction that they want to take, and, and she really did an excellent job. So, they would be coming back to us and, and reporting to us the direction that they're going to be taking once that plan is complete. And then just a quick note of speedy recovery wishes to David Guion, who had to have emergency hip replacement surgery. He was not able to attend that meeting as a result, so our happy, healthy thoughts to, to him and his partner as well.
Very good, thank you. Coda, Kathy?
Trying to think here, I don't have anything to report on Coda tonight, thank you.
Very good. I'm up next with the Dublin Community Foundation, we have not yet, met yet this year. Hopefully, we'll have something to report at the next meeting. Friendship Association, Christina, John?
We have a meeting coming up later this month.
Okay. Morpsy would be myself, and I would just add that Morpsy has scheduled a tour of the working prototype of, for the Hyperloop, and Dana and I will be headed out tomorrow to have the opportunity to see this working prototype. I'm sure Dana is very anxious to put me on the first vessel, this, who needs dummies?
We've talked about that a couple times.
So...
We expect a full report back.
Dana may have to give it, but, yeah, we're going to head out and, and see that tomorrow.
Where is it, Ellis?
Yes, we are headed to Nevada, to, they have a, a working prototype that we're going to have the opportunity to tour and talk to them a little bit about where they are and the, and their planning stages, so very excited about that.
So, four hours out and four minutes back?
But, yeah, so maybe they'll, maybe they'll perfect it while we're there, and we'll take one home, I don't know.
That's great.
So, looking forward to that. Logan Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission, Kathy?
Yeah, so, talking about some new leadership, there's some new leadership at, you see, we congratulate David Golden, he is going to Pickerington to be their Development Director, so, a new leader. Brad Bowden Miller, who has been there since two thousand and fourteen, has stepped up in the new directorship, so we look forward to working with him. So, they have a lot, a lot of exciting things going on, so that's good news and congratulations to Dave as well. Thanks.
Great. Okay, Thirty-three Innovation Corridor, Kathy, Jane?
We didn't meet, yeah.
Okay, very good. Arts Council, John?
There'll be a new exhibit of student artwork from Dublin, and it will run from the eighth to the second, twenty-second, so, always very interesting, and it's interest, it's good to see the real rare, raw talent that we have in this community in the arts, it's amazing. These students do superlative work, you'll be, you'll be surprised.
Great. Board of Education, Christina?
Nothing this time.
Okay. Washington Township, and Greg is missing his first-ever council meeting in all of his tenure on council, this is his first absence, but we do have Mr. Richter here that could fill us in on anything that may be suitable for public consumption. Happy New Year, that's suitable, thank you. Dublin Bridges, Jane?
But we will be meeting this month, I think.
Very good. Okay, roundtable discussion, Jane, would you like to lead us off?
No, I want to, I want to thank Dana and, and Michelle about the parking over the, at the historic district and helping with code enforcement. We had some requests from businesses about helping with the parking in the Darby Lot, and code enforcement went out. Michelle and Dana had, had, turned a construction, do watch out there and, and see how many construction vehicles occupied the, occupied the parking lot, and quite a few did, and so, so I think it helped a lot, and I've, I've heard good things back.
Yeah, I want to pass along to, to Donna and her team as well for, for all the effort there on the enforcement.
Yes, absolutely, Donna, thank you.
And the door knocking that went on by Kyle and the group to, to go out and talk to the businesses, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah, and I think they really appreciated it, they really did, thank you.
Great, Kathy?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to say thanks again to Ann and Jenny and Judy for work on the board pack. I think we're getting our mojo on. One of the things that I think is great about this is that we will now be able to add, like, presentations and discussions, like, you know, for instance, our, our brief presentation on, on the TIF agreement tonight, to be able, so that we can pull that up during the course of our conversation. So, now, instead of having to download it, we can do that. So, I think this is going to make it easier for us to find, as we've learned to maneuver through this, and I appreciate that, so I'm enjoying it, so I thank, thank you for that work. And I also want to say I had the pleasure to go to Gary Lee, Union County Commissioner's retirement. Man, there was a line down, down the street, down the, the walkway, I think he served, I don't know how many decades, and so we wish him well, and that's wonderful, and got a chance to meet the, the new commissioner, Christine, she started, and so we look forward to getting a chance to spend some time with her, but we thank Gary and we wish him well. It was a, it was a nice celebration, so, thank you.
Yeah, I wish to extend our condolences to the Hidaka family and I, for their loss, and it's one of the first families in our city when it comes to considering community involvement, they're always there, involved in everything, and two just fantastic people and our hearts and our prayers go out to them. Also want to, I hate to call out just one group, but, you know, we have such amazing citizenry doing so many cool things, but I want to compliment Don Pino on the Rees Across America program. He went out and found the funders to buy all the rees, and it was the Dublin Village Tavern and MNX Global Logistics. That was a very nice program, and your mother and father was there, the leprechauns came out and acknowledged the different military branches and the police chaplain was there, Reverend Steve Norden, and it was just a really well-done thing, and it was just totally driven by this one individual who put the entire program together, did a really great job, and had it organized, and it was first-rate, so...
I did hear from those same two individuals, you mentioned that you did a delightful job of representing the city and delivering remarks, so thank you for that.
Well, thank you, I was honored to be there and represent the city.
Anything else?
That's it.
Christina?
Thank you. Also, my heartfelt sympathy to the Hidaka family, I got to spend a fair bit of time with Aki, and he was just a delightful young man. It's a great loss. Just a big thank you to our staff for putting together the Senior Circulator Kickoff, which is this coming on the eleventh?
Yeah.
That's very exciting. I've gotten several emails, like, pre-thanking us for doing this, and we haven't even held the meeting yet, so that tells me the participation's probably going to be good and really positive, so thank you for putting that together. Question, Dana, I happened to see the other day, I was up at the corner of Glick Road and Dublin Road, and I saw a bird, and I don't mean the flying kind, I mean the scooter kind, on the northwest corner. Have you seen any of them? That's the first one I've seen in Dublin.
I have not, I don't know.
But they're here.
I don't...
Okay.
Somebody must rode it all the way up from downtown.
I don't know, that's what I'm kind of curious about, are any of the surrounding communities using them at this point?
Yeah.
Wow, that's a pretty big hike to get it all the way up there, right?
I, I don't know, I'm not, I was joking, I don't know that that really happened.
No, I mean, it's legit, I saw it.
I don't know, yeah.
I saw a woman riding it.
Wow.
Yeah. So, I don't, I don't, I, my fear is that we don't get ahead of this, what I don't want to happen is...
No, we would not introduce that without letting you know, and that, and they don't, they don't have the ability to just come in and, and start doing those. Now, if somehow they're migrating into the city, if you will, I guess Michelle has a comment on this, but that's something we keep an eye out for.
Yeah, we, we've been in communication with Lime, and really, the suburban model doesn't fit for them for the scooters, so Nick Ploukas talked to them and some others.
Yeah, this was a bird.
And, so, they're, they're, they're not going to be here anytime soon, I don't think.
How about other vendors, we may need to...
Yeah, this is, this was a bird, not a lime.
I think the same goes for all the scooter companies. So, if we look to want to, wanting to bring in scooters, we're going to have to approach them and figure out if, if they would be willing to, on, as a pilot project. So, CSAC is looking at this right now, and they've been struggling with where scooters should be, where they shouldn't be, so they'll be bringing something back to council sometime in the next couple of months.
Thanks, I was just, like, surprised, and it definitely seemed very out of place